Left off before lunch on Bill 41-32. And on the list with amendments, it says Senator Mike S. Nicholas. And everybody, we recessed to find out, everybody had copies of the amendments. So Senator S. Nicholas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. As stated before we recessed, I fully support this bill. I believe that it's a very good bill and I commend the authors and the cosponsors for moving it forward. I do have a flurry of amendments that I would like to move forward. And these amendments are to enhance the penalties related to this. I firmly believe that any kind of family violence should be treated very harshly. I don't believe that we should be light to any degree with respect to family violence. And I don't believe that this bill is light per se. I believe it's a good bill as originally intended. I just want to make it a little bit more harsh, actually a lot more harsh. And that's just a position that I take as a husband and as a father. I believe that it's a position that is shared by this community in general, that we need to be harsher on family violence crimes. And so the first amendment that I would like to proffer to the body is an amendment on page one, line six, to strike the words misdemeanor or of a, and just make it be a third-degree felony as soon as they're found guilty of family violence. That's my first amendment, Madam Speaker. On the total amendments here, the entire packet, we're going in order of how it flows in the bill. So page one, line six of the bill, we're striking misdemeanor or of a, so it's just going to be once you're guilty of a, once you're found guilty of family violence is a third-degree felony?
On the amendment. Is there any discussion? Okay, I have McCready, Vice Speaker, and Attorney M. Chaco. Is anybody else? Senator McCready on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On the amendment, I commend the mover of the amendment for strengthening these penalties. I just have a concern, and maybe we can take a recess, but I had a concern about changing the misdemeanor to a felony. How would that align with, and I want to yield a question, how would that align to the sentencing of the individual that committed the violent crime? And is there a subsequent, in a subsequent conviction, is there anything that we would then have a mandatory for this convicted felon?
Senator, you're due to the question.
I apologize, Madam Speaker, if the question can be repeated.
Senator McCready, can you repeat the question?
So by taking out the misdemeanor and just making it a third-degree felony, how would we then formulate the sentencing guidelines? And then if this person would subsequently reoffend for the same, the exact same third-degree felony, is there a follow-up sentencing guideline that we're going to set? Like a two strikes and you're out type of thing? Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator?
Yes, Madam Speaker, thank you. Those are the follow-up amendments that I actually have for the remainder of the bill. For this particular initial amendment, it's just to make sure that the crime itself is classified immediately as a third-degree felony. I understand that, and I'm sure we're going to hear testimony about how there's going to be some desire for judicial prudence in determining how these crimes are determined. For me, and for the purposes of this amendment, it's to make sure that the first time you beat up your family, you're going to be called a felon. I think that's a standard that I'm willing to go on the record and set. And as far as sentencing goes, we're going to be addressing other amendments that are going to highlight what the sentencing is going to be as we go into those amendments.
Senator, I think I want to try to do something a little bit different here, is that because you're doing this piecemeal without knowing then for the members to be able to see the full picture, I would allow you to still make all your amendments, but I'd like for you to kind of just talk about what you're doing initially, and then subsequently what all the other amendments are because of that one change you're willing to make, so others then can see and have a better idea, and then as you introduce it individually, they would know. Would that work best for you then, Senator McCready?
You know, I don't want to hold up the proceeding, but if I could call for a quick recess, because I might, I would like to proffer an amendment, but before I do, I'd like to work with the author and the mover of the amendment to maybe we can just add my proffer into what he's doing.
I understand what you're trying to do, but what I want him to do is to give an overview of what it is that he's envisioning to make these changes and how critical the first is for all the other amendments.
So what I'm saying is maybe the amendment that I may have might work with all of his amendments. That's why I'm saying if we took a recess and I could find out if my amendment proffered would then work with all his amendments, and if the offer didn't think that it would compromise his bill, then I would go forth with it. It shouldn't take but maybe a minute.
Well, let me, I would like to recognize then first before that happens, just get a better picture of what we're doing here, is Mr. Vice Speaker, Mr. Vice Speaker, did you raise your hand to make a comment? Because, I mean, he's in a very unique position where he's actually been the judge to have sat there and taken this to be able to see. So Mr. Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I mean, I support the idea of stronger sentences, but I really do think that we should take this back and have the Attorney General comment on it because of its impact on trials. It's quite different if you're going to go from mandatory 30 day, 48 hours to mandatory one year in jail, and it's going to be a felony straight off the top. There are defendants that will go to trial immediately, and I don't know how many of you have been victimized, but to have to testify in a trial is a second victimization. Some may think that it's a way of being able to get your, say, your piece, but it is a very difficult thing to have to come forth and do that. And when judges allow for changes of plea and allow it to go to a lesser included offense, it's because the victim has said, "I don't want to have to do this in open court. I don't want to have to go through and in front of 12 people," because this is going to be a felony, "in front of 12 people, explain what happened and subject myself to the cross-examination questions of my significant other, my husband's, my wife's attorney who's going to try to protect them from having a felony offense." We saw last week when we had the roundtable that they're grossly understaffed. And if they're going to have to take every single one of these to trial because we've increased it from 48 hours to one year for the first offense, and we've made it a felony of a third degree straight off, every single one of them will go to trial. I'm not sure if the AG is prepared to do that. And I'm not sure how the victims want to deal with this. And I really do think we owe it both to the victims and the prosecutors to be able to hear them out on whether or not this is something that they want to have done.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker. What I'm going to allow here basically is a general-type discussion before then we recess and before whatever decision is going to make, and difference to the chairman, I mean, the author of the bill, Senator Frank Ugglen, I will recognize.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I certainly appreciate the perspective that was shared with us by not only Vice Speaker but also former Chief Justice of our judiciary. I did ask the Oversight Chair, Speaker Benn, if by any chance he can reach out to the Office of the Attorney General to ensure that at least one of their representatives, if not the AG himself, can be able to be here so that he can share his perspective, whether it's through sideline discussions that can be shared here in the halls shortly after or what. I agree that anytime that you're going to impose such a penalty, that certainly aside from what the bill that we originally started discussing, because that was endorsed by the Office of the Attorney General by virtue of looking at the committee report, but anytime that we're deviating from that, I think the Chief Justice, the former Chief Justice, our colleague certainly has his perspective that was added in in terms of making sure that we at least allow the Office of the Attorney General and the Chief Prosecutor to be able to perhaps contribute to the conversation, whether it be in the hallway or even in the public hearing room. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Speaker Benn just shared that he has contacted him and they will be sending someone over. They're still deciding whether they're going to send someone. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Speaker Benn.
So in light of that, then the next, of course, the next thing to decide is that with Mr. Chairman, you want to set this aside until the AG comes or we proceed. As the mover of a series of amendments, I'm going to again defer to Senator S. Nicholas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. In light of these recent developments, I would like to take you up on your wise and gracious offer for me to go ahead and explain all of the amendments. That way I can put it into context for members of the body, so that in the event that we do have additional commentary from individuals coming down and sharing their perspectives with us, it'll be within the context of what it is, of the direction that I'm hoping these amendments will move us into.
Thank you. So you may proceed then.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have a series of amendments to propose that are intended to enhance the penalties associated with crimes of family violence. We mentioned the first one already, which is to make it considered a third-degree felony. The following amendments are to then establish the sentencing once these crimes have been actually sentenced. So just a reference on line six, it says, "and shall be sentenced as follows." And so that indicates to me that this is after the adjudication, the actual trial takes place, and the final sentencing of the individual who committed the family violence. The first amendment, after changing it from a misdemeanor to a third-degree felony, the following amendment is to raise the sentence. Currently, it reads 48 hours. My amendment is to make it 30 days, not one year, but 30 days after the first offense. And I want it to be 30 days for a specific purpose. I believe that 30 days is enough time for a victim to move out of the house, find a family member or another place to stay, go and get a court protective order against the person who committed the crime against them. It gives the victims enough time to recollect themselves and to do all those things that they need to do in order to move on with their lives after this sentence has been imposed. If it's 48 hours, Madam Speaker, I just put myself into the victim's shoes and I imagine suffering from a crime of family violence, and then all of a sudden, 48 hours later after the individual is sentenced, they're going to be coming out. And I can just imagine them huddling and cowering and worrying that, okay, I called the cops and this person was sentenced and they went to jail for two days, and they're going to be coming back. And I don't believe that 48 hours is enough time for the victim to be able to do everything that they need to do from recollecting themselves and putting the pieces back together for them to start taking action, to find a place to stay, to get a protective order, a restraining order, or whatever. I don't think 48 hours is enough time. I think 30 days is a good enough time. And so I would like to increase, as my second amendment, the length of time for sentencing from 48 hours to 30 days. That way enough time can be given. And subsequent to that, the following amendment is then to enhance the penalty for the second offense. The second offense, I mean, imagine, imagine somebody beating up their family twice, and they go to jail for 30 days. I understand the strains on the judicial system, but again, what is the standard that our society wants to set? That getting punched in the left eye is a two-day prison sentence, and then coming home after two days and getting punched on the right eye is 30 days? So I want to increase that 30-day sentence to one year on the second offense. And subsequent to that amendment, my follow-up amendment was for the third offense, third And right now, the third offense is one year in prison. This kind of discussion, Madam Speaker, I'm very sensitive to, and it just really, it really hits me deep. But if you beat up your family three times, you're going to go to jail for one year? This increases the sentence, Madam Speaker, my follow-up amendment is to make it go from one year to five years.
May I, I know the point of information.
Yes. Please note that it says no less than before that.
Okay.
And a third-degree felony can go up to five. So it's just, it's no less than.
Well, this amendment will make it no less than five years. And the follow-up amendment to that, Madam Speaker, will be on page three, line 15. And that's just for consistency, increases it from 30 days to one year. Follow-up to that is page four, line two, increases it from one year to five years. Follow-up to that is page four, line 24, increases that from 48 hours to 30 days. The amendment after that is on page four, line 25. It increases the fine from $1,000, $1,000, not more than $1,000, to not more than $10,000. Follow-up to that, Madam Speaker, page five, line 19, from 30 days to one year. Follow-up to that, Madam Speaker, page five, line 24, from two years to seven years. And this is for a third violation. And basically, the way this reads is that if someone were to commit a third violation within seven years of a prior conviction, then the imprisonment shall be for no less than, again, it changes a subsequent amendment from 30 days to five years. All of these amendments, Madam Speaker, are subsequent to each other, and there's no point in raising a first offense from 48 hours to 30 days and having a second offense the same 30 days. And so that's why all of these amendments are layered this way. But they're proffered as a complete package to the bill to make the penalty stiffer. It may cost our people more money. It may inundate our prison system even more. And that's just something that I'm willing to accept. And if we need to raise a tax, or raise a fee, or raise something to pay to lock these people up longer, I'm more than willing to have that discussion, Madam Speaker, because I believe our people will be more than willing to have that discussion also. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senators. On the next request by Senator McCready's, we're going to take a brief recess, and I also understand is that the Attorney General, Mr. Speaker, I know you've made the phone call, that they'll be down here. So we're going to take that brief recess.
No, I withdraw my request because after speaking to the author, I'll wait to what the Attorney General has to say about, I guess, the legumes of the amendments.
Okay, so before we start then with all of those of you who have raised your hand to speak on the motion, when the topic was brought up about bringing in the Attorney General's office, Senator Thomas, I know you had your hand up. Okay, all right, real good. So we will, is it prior to the list of those? Because I have to speak on here, will be, well, Senator McCready, Vice Speaker, and M. Chaco.
Attorney General.
Yes, but what I want to do is that, I'm just thinking whether it would be prudent to proceed without the Attorney General being here. So why don't we take a brief recess? So why don't we take a brief recess?
The legislature is back in session. Senator San Nicolas, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I really appreciate the Attorney General's office and their responsiveness, particularly Deputy AG Phil Tidinko coming down here and shedding more light on the issue. I want to make it clear that in my testimony, from inception, I said that this is a good bill, and I firmly believe in that. I also want to make it clear that in the discussion that we've had with the Deputy AG and with my fellow senators, not a single one of my colleagues disagreed with any of the commentary that I made regarding the need for us to enhance these penalties. And so, that is a sentiment that I'm glad we all share. However, in light of the amendments that I proposed, it was made clear that this may delay the bill, we may have to take it back to committee and rewrite the bill, and I don't want to do that. This bill is going to set a baseline that I think will be a good start, and it's something that I can already support in its original construction. I will be having additional legislation forthcoming to make it even stiffer, but I don't want my amendments to in any way delay this baseline and this good bill that's already been established. And so, in light of the discussion from the Deputy Attorney General, we're going to be working in my office on enhancing these penalties even more, but to make sure that it's consistent with existing statutes and to make sure that it is fluid throughout the bill, not just in these individual sections that we talked about. And so, in that vein, I'm going to withdraw my amendments and again state my support for this bill as originally constructed and for the good intentions that it has. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the motion to withdraw, no objections. So, now on the main motion. Is there anyone, those that I have on the list, are you still on to speak? Okay, so, Senator... In this case now, because I spoke, you spoke earlier, I'm going to call in Senator Limchak and then Senator Yamashita, or unless you don't want, you still do?
Sizilus Massey, Madam Speaker. I actually raised my hand to make comment on the amendment, so since it's been withdrawn, I do not need to speak on the bill, but I do, I will say that it has my full support.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Yamashita.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for giving me an opportunity to be heard. I certainly am interested in this whole notion of strengthened penalties to divert or stop crimes of family violence. I don't think anyone will question that I am abhorred by family violence, and I've always been very concerned to buy it. But what I do ask is as we pass this measure, because I do believe it has the support, and as other senators move forward to stiffen the penalties, that somewhere, somehow, and maybe it's something that we will be doing from our sexual violence conversation, the picture has to be whole. We've got these penalties, I think, to say, if you do this, and this is what shall happen. We're hoping that that's going to stop, that it's going to arrest this evil behavior. But the truth of the matter is, there's more components to that. At the roundtable that Vice Speaker had, I think it was last week or the week before, I can't remember now, when the Attorney General's office was in full force at the table, they had brought with them actually their victim advocates. And they all sat in the back, they were, they didn't want to be in the camera at all. But their supervisor, Mr. Bamba, and Carol, and Basil, and Phil, and Larry, and I'm sorry that I'm calling them by first names, but with deep respect, they talked about how short they are, and how hard it is, how challenging it is, that as soon as a victim is identified, they go and they help. So as we were talking about the time that someone's going to be going to jail, and we're going to get rid of these people, you know, punish them, I kept thinking, there's another part of this, and those are the victims. We need to strengthen that whole part of it so that they can be stronger, so that they don't say, "You're welcome to come back into my home and to abuse me again," because that's a whole part of the psyche here. Madam Speaker, you received a letter from Mr. Zimmerman, and you were kind enough to share it with all of us, we all have it in our mailboxes. And he oversees Oasis, and that does, it oversees addiction programs and substance abuse programs, and he's been here more than once to talk about how difficult procurement is to get the grants, to provide treatment programs for those of us who are addicted to alcohol and to drug abuse. And those monies are all drying up, and he's saying, "What are we going to do now?" At the top of our list of violence are those of us who abuse drugs or abuse alcohol. That's another part of this problem. The family violence is activated by substance abuse, by drugs. And I go back to something that I said yesterday, and that is, we want to seriously address our abuse issues, our family violence, our suicide rates, our delinquency. We need to get serious about early childhood education and about parenting and about family education. And that, again, is another issue that some of us are seriously looking at, and so I look forward to that. So, Madam Speaker, what I am asking is that, yes, while we're saying, "You do this, you hurt somebody, you shall be punished," and it is serious, but we want to be really serious, it has to be a whole picture. It is about, it is about healthy parenting, it is about in our schools, about making sure that our children are taught healthy habits. It is about teachers' understanding that, yes, they're teaching academics, but at the heart of academics is social emotional development. It is about mental health. We need to get serious about, again, one more time, reminding people that they must treat every single person with regard and respect. You may know how to read or calculate, but if you don't respect another person, it's useless. You may know how to read and calculate, but if you have diabetes and you're dying of heart disease, it doesn't help you very much. The whole child, the whole picture, everything in its, in essence, needs to be addressed. I read the committee report again for Bill 4132, and I was concerned about the kind of testimony that the Attorney General's office gave. I mean, it was, it was supportive, but I, well, I guess true to nature, they don't try to sway the way we're going to go, they're very, very objective. But I was reading the court system's testimony, and they weren't for it, and they weren't against it, but I'm really interested in how this all imposes upon judicial discretion. And I've had colleagues in here telling me that we are here to make the laws. And I, and I totally understand that, and I respect what our job is. But in order to have effective policy, we need to make sure that those who are carrying it out have full input and are fully engaged in this policy. And so, Madam Speaker, I do stand in support of 4132. I appreciate what we're trying to do, but I ask that we all remember that this is not This is not going to stop us hurting each other. It's a bigger picture. And we have, we have, there are absolutely hopeful solutions, and I know that collectively we can move forward in saying what the priorities are, in saying that the curriculum has to face the whole child, that it has to start at the beginning, that we have to ensure our teachers are trained and evaluated in how they address the whole child. And it's not a convenience issue. None of this is easy. All of this takes hard work. You said goodbye to your daughter today. That's hard stuff to do, to be a parent and to balance everything. Nothing is easy, and all of us have to be mindful that this is hard work, and many people in our island don't know how to do it. We need to talk about how do we help them become good parents? And what are the penalties when you're not? And how do you have those safety nets? We certainly don't want to be locking everybody up, but there's got to be safety nets for the victims, and there's got to be programs that say, "This is how you got to do it." And our nonprofits are ready, and they're reaching out, and they're saying, "Can we talk about priority support and how we move forward?" Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator McCready.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would just like to echo some of the sentiments made by the speaker before me, and I want to also commend the author, and on top of that, thank the mover of the amendment. He's on the right track, and I'll be very happy to support your next bill, the standalone bill that you were talking about earlier. You know, this author of this bill, I appreciate his leadership in being able to, I guess you could say, put some teeth in this bill, and to send a message that these type of violences and this body will not tolerate any such crimes. And if you do commit these crimes, you will be punished for them. So I thank the author for that. And I also want to mention some of the findings that the author has found in relation to family violence. And I think it's a message that we need to act on, and I think it's a message that this body has the responsibility to enforce these laws or create these laws so they become enforceable. And like I said yesterday, I don't want to be backed up into an economic corner, but when we do that, the community becomes the prisoners, and the prisoner becomes part of the community. So I would like to offer, or proffer, I should say, a few amendments, a few just basic amendments to the language of the bill, Madam Speaker. And I would like for it to read, after speaking with the author and the Attorney General, I would like for the proffer to read on line one, or I should say, page one, line seven, "For the first offense, the court shall impose a sentence of no less than forty-eight hours, and after hours, which cannot be suspended, and the convicted would have to serve one hundred percent of the minimum sentence given." And for the second, I would also, for the record, state, "For the second offense, the court shall impose a sentence of no less than thirty days." Pardon?
This is longer than I think the clerk is able to record.
This is only two, I mean, it's the same amendments for both.
Okay, but... Yeah, this, it's a little bit long. So, I'm going to ask you to please write it down, because you have three sentences there already.
Okay, so, I'm just adding to the end of the sentences. I'm just reading it for the record, but okay, so...
Which cannot be suspended.
Which cannot be suspended, and the violator must serve one hundred percent of the minimum sentence for all three.
Okay, which cannot be suspended.
Yes.
And the violator must serve one hundred percent of...
Of his minimum sentence.
Of its minimum...
Its minimum sentence.
Sentence. Now...
Could I take a quick recess?
Yes.
Sorry.
The legislature is back in session. Senator McCready, you have an amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The amendment will read as follows, after page number one, line six, after and shall be sentenced, comma, which shall not be suspended or reduced.
Okay. On the amendment, which is on page one, line six, after the word sentence, add a comma, and at the word shall be sentenced, shall not be suspended or reduced, on the amendment. Senator Yamashita, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Well, I certainly understand and appreciate why the mover of this amendment is doing it, to strengthen the prevention aspect and to penalize the people who hurt us. In the short conversation that we had with the Attorney General about thirty minutes ago, and perhaps others in this body who are more aware of the judiciary system can really help me understand this, but what I heard Mr. Gaidinko saying was, when we do this, it really impacts or influences what the prosecutors do, what the defense lawyers end up doing, and there was consequences to saying all of this, and so perhaps if somebody on the floor or the mover of the amendment can help me better understand that this is not going to, I don't know, I just get real, I have concerns about judiciary discretion and what their work includes or encompasses. I certainly don't want people violating another, I certainly am against that, but in the court system, they are there to do that, to decide if a crime is committed and what that punishment looks like. And I do, I know I've had this conversation on the floor already with several, and that is, our job is to make the laws, but again, I say, or I suggest, that in the crafting of this policy, I really am concerned about their input or their perspective. I don't even know if I made any sense right now, but I'm just, I'm trying to figure out, does this, is this a smart move in consideration of the whole picture of when a crime is committed and when justice is being addressed or served?
Senator McCready, do you yield to the question?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I do, and I respect the question from the former speaker. You know, before I proffered this amendment, I asked the Attorney General if this is something that we could add to the bill that would strengthen the bill, and he agreed that this just specifies what you mean when you say minimum. So I don't, I definitely am not taking any type of jurisdiction or discretion away from the judges. I think this helps the judges. It definitely, certainly does not handcuff them. This is, this is a specific piece of wording, or language if you will, that just says, a minimum means you must serve the time that the judge handed down to you without a suspended sentence. So when you see some criminals get sentenced to a minimum of one year, but they only serve six months, so why even have a minimum? All this does is outline suspending the minimum sentence. Thank you.
Senator Yamashita, you seem able to answer your question?
Yes, it answered my question. I just don't agree with the answer, but it, you know, I just think the tools that the courthouse had their job, their work, does it take away from their responsibility even? And while it might seem to some of us that this is going to help the judges, you know, I suggest that they know best what the case is because they're the ones studying it and have the support of all their legal clerks. They really get into the matter, and so I don't know if one size fits all. Well, actually, I'll tell you what, one size never fits all. There's just no way. And so that is my concern. In our classroom, when someone says that one solution is going to work for all of our kids, we know that is not right. So to tell me that this is going to be the consequence for all cases, you know, I have a concern with that. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Does anybody else would like to speak on the amendment? Senator Mike Sanikus?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I was, the good senator who offered this amendment, I was going to work with him to include this in a new draft that we were going to work on to further stiffen up this bill. However, it being proffered now, I'm in agreement with the individual offering the amendment. I don't want to get in the way of the courts. If this is going to get in the way of the courts, then I would like to be more aware of that. However, absent that, I don't think there's any one of us who likes to read in the paper about so-and-so got sentenced but got the sentence suspended, and they only served, you know, months at a time versus the minimum that they were required to serve. So perhaps notwithstanding any other provisions of law, you know, this mandatory requirement, so they're not suspending the sentence, I think is a good thing. But I think also that us better understanding whether or not this is going to get in the way of the ability of the court to work with the existing programs, I think we also need to get a better understanding of that also. So I would like to respectfully suggest to the offer of the amendment, we can include this in the new language that we'll work on, unless you insist that we go ahead and move forward with it today. Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. So Senator McCready, there was a question proffered to you.
Yes, I will yield to the good senator from Talo Foco.
There you go.
And I would like to, I guess I would withdraw the amendment, and we'll work on that amendment for your next bill, just as so long as it does not compromise the bill that we have in front of us. Madam Speaker, thank you.
Okay, on the motion into withdrawal, hearing no objections, so order. On the main motion, there being none, Senator Uggan, would you like to close, or you want to send it down?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and to our colleagues, thank you very much, and Speaker Pangalina, thank you for reaching out to the office of the Attorney General, because certainly any time that we're trying to increase penalties, we want to make sure that it does not make the office of the Attorney General, especially the prosecutor's job, that much more difficult in terms of making, providing consistency in the laws. So I want to thank all of our colleagues for the nature of the discussion this afternoon. I think we all, to a great extent, understand that the situation that is affecting families out there in our community. This is just one of the many facets, as previous speakers have shared, Madam Speaker, that we certainly need to move in a direction of addressing, whether it be providing and hopefully enhancing, I believe the term that was used by one of our colleagues is promoting healthy families. That's one aspect. Continuing to see what can be done as, within reason, to ensure that the nonprofit organizations as well as government agencies that provide direct support to individuals, victims, and families, certainly we can continue to move in the direction of providing that additional reinforcement. You know, when I look at what we have accomplished so far in this legislature in terms of enhancing and making stricter laws as it applies to drinking, I know the term has been used, drinking responsibly, but in terms of trying to discourage any unnecessary incident to occur out there, I know that when it comes to family violence, one of the rationale is intoxication. And I certainly hope that this, the intent behind this legislation is to make sure that people, yes, do act responsibly, but also that they recognize that the laws are that much more strengthened as a result of the action of this body, and hopefully would serve as a deterrent and a discouragement to any individual out there who would move in this direction. So, this is Madam Speaker, Mr. Speaker, I guess you transition now. Mr. Speaker, I want to just thank the cosponsors of the legislation, and I thank our colleagues really for the discussions, the healthy discussions this afternoon, and I would like to request your consideration in terms of supporting this measure. Thank you very much, and Doc Lynn, as is his master.
On the motion to send the bill down to the voting pile, hearing no objection. The next bill on the agenda is Bill Number One. Madam Speaker, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to place Bill One-32 LS in the third reading file, and this bill is as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation, and Further Substituted on the floor. But I'd like to just, again, briefly discuss.
On the motion, hearing no objections, so ordered. You recognize?
Thank you again very much, Mr. Speaker. For my colleagues, just to refresh your memories from last session, what I've done here is that all of the amendments that were proffered at that time, that they're all back again in this substituted version. And one of the very first motion that was made was in the cosponsorship of this bill, which had passed last month, and I guess maybe for the listening audience, I should let them know exactly what it is, that this is an act relative to authorizing the Guam Department of Education to procure this installation and maintenance of electronic security systems throughout the Guam Public Schools, also known as the Secure Our Schools Act of 2013, and for other purposes. The legislative findings in my discussion with the chairman of the committee, just to only show, an indication of how this had come about in terms of where we were looking at the funding source in the original form, but it's just to show then, for historical purposes, where this 1.2 million, there's a list here, but it's not the amount that's going to be used, but rather less that amount. The definitions have basically remained the same, with the exception of adding additional definition, I'm sorry, not in definitions, on the responsibilities of the contractor when we worked with GCA. So that paragraph has been restructured. On the security system study was an amendment that was proffered by Senator Tom Ada, wanting to make sure then that this, at the time when we were discussing it, it was like a risk, maintenance risk study, but rather in the process and working with legal counsel, that then the term was used was to perform a system-wide comprehensive study. The section three was the biggest discussion, and this was in cooperation with Speaker Pangalina and Senator Limtiaco, that rather than going the route of having to use the monies to go out and get a bond for about seven years, which will be a short term, is that rather than go out and go into further debt, that the suggestion was to do the advance appropriation and be very specific on the $800,000. When I mentioned earlier in the front, when we were talking about the 1.2 million, that 800 of that then will be appropriated from the general fund for fiscal year 2014 revenues through DOE for the purchase of electronic security systems to be installed and maintained by the contractor in the schools. The other that was also suggested by Speaker Pangalina then is that one of the things that, as an amendment, that we have this tendency to purchase equipment, but we always fail to provide for maintenance of these equipment. So in this case, the language on line 16 to 18, that after then the acquisition of the equipment, the security cameras, is that then DOE then must come to the legislature and through its annual budget, is to request then for the cost for maintenance of the cameras and the monitoring systems. And that's it. So that's the bill, the substituted version that I want to present to our colleagues. It's, this is really timely, because I'm sure all of you know that the bill was introduced first before DOE was actually, had put out an RFP to purchase, I mean, to purchase computers for teachers and students in the classrooms, and the third-party fiduciary agent has been concerned about not having a security system in the schools to protect these computers, because these are monies, are monies that will go towards actually purchasing a large number of computers, not just for teachers, but even for students, and computers and laptops. So this bill actually then would now be able to provide that security needed then for not just the equipment, the camera, I mean, the computer equipment, but is to provide security for the schools. I don't have the data with me right now, but there's been over seventeen break-ins at our schools, and so there's a lot of cost to our schools, not just in terms of equipment from vandalism, but we lose a lot of instructional time when the classrooms have been destroyed, and they have to go in to repair the classrooms, and our children are deprived of whatever equipment or instructional supplies, textbooks that are there that have been damaged, and then now the children will be left without having those instructional materials. And the other is that with the security cameras, we'll also be able to, it will provide a deterrent for those wanting to come in to not just vandalize the school, but then the cameras will be on 24 hours. It would provide some form of security as well should there be an unwelcome visitor to the campus, that they're easy, they can easily be monitored and identify the individual, any trespassers during a school campus, during the school day when the children are there, and even after school hours when it is dark. So I hope, and I ask, of course, my colleagues to support this, you know, version, which is, which has, was amended by the committee and also on the floor. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
On the motion, any senators wish to be heard? Senator Uggan, any other senator, then Senator Pangalina, then Senator Ada.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I certainly stand in support of the legislation, and I think that when we took, take a look at just the number of break-ins or vandalism activities that have taken place throughout our island over the course of the last year, I think it more than justifies the investment as provided here, and moving in the direction of electronic security systems. The only question I have, and Mr. Speaker, if in fact the good speaker, the sponsor of the legislation would be able to yield, is the responsibilities of the contractor. I do have a question as it applies to Department of Education personnel getting properly trained so that in fact they can to some extent augment the, I guess, the monitoring of some of these cameras, or is it the intent that the contractor will solely be responsible for that? Because I think that in this case, if a number of the monitoring mechanisms are installed in the schools, it only would be appropriate for Department of Education or school personnel to at least have some knowledge of how to operate it or operate a system, not to negatively impact any warranty that may be applied in that case. But I think that in this particular situation, it would be, it may be appropriate for some of the Department of Education or the school personnel to be included in the overall monitoring process. So I'm looking at this, and I'm trying to figure out if in fact, Mr. Speaker, there's any provision here that allows for at least DOE personnel to participate or to be part of the monitoring process. And if the intent of the sponsor, Mr. Speaker, Madam Speaker, if the intent of the legislation is to just allow the contractor to assume all that responsibility, then that would be fine with me. I just think that also involving some of the school personnel may also help the process. Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I will yield to the question. When we were having this discussion with the Department of Education and with GSA, it was recommended that we incorporate the language by placing a lot of the responsibilities of the, not just the warranty, but the maintenance of the equipment, that they will be responsible for all this, especially because if there are any type of damage to it, we want them to either replace it and repair it at, of course, not at the cost, at their cost, and rather not that of the Department of Education. Additionally, with, excuse me, on the bottom, which talks about the performance of a system-wide comprehensive study, which would call for specifications for each one of these. Now granted, we were told is that these camera equipment, you know, I know that there's updates, there are always newer models. These cameras are normally similar to what we have here, that are fairly high, and that, you know, is something that contractors feel that they do not want it tampered with. So if there are any type of repair that needs to be done, then that will be the responsibility of the company, of the contractor. So, and that's the only reason why that we want that to be the responsibility of the contractor rather than DOE personnel.
Is that satisfactory?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and thank you, Madam Speaker. Just as long as, I guess, I have a good understanding in terms of what direction you would like to take this. Just to share with you, like I mentioned a little earlier, I think it would only be appropriate if perhaps one of the school personnel would be knowledgeable to a certain extent in terms of operating the system so that eventually, maybe someday down the road, aside from giving it to a third-party contractor, perhaps the department may be able to move in the direction of eventually assuming the responsibility of the monitoring of some of these systems. But, you know, in terms of cost efficiency, in terms of cost reduction, perhaps that may be an option that may be explored down the road. But I certainly stand in support of the legislation. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Uggan. Speaker Pangalina, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I certainly support providing resources to the Department of Education, most especially to secure its campuses and to prevent break-ins. But the bill and the funding source, to me, is of some concern. It takes money from next year's budget, or next year's collection, basically, and we're advance appropriating it, like we do the textbooks. And we do that for the textbooks because of the timeline that it's required in order to order it and get it to come and be available. And it allows them to go out for an RFP with advanced appropriation, but the disbursement of the money actually happens in the subsequent fiscal year. So the disbursement of that appropriate, advanced appropriation is within that year. And so we also know and account for it, and it's something, again, that's required just because of the timing requirement for the ordering to ensure that we can get them on time. And we don't have a good track record, by the way, of meeting those ordering timelines. Now, the problem I have, and the concern I have, of course, is that it's an advance appropriation without knowing what its impact is on the other needs of this government, and those discussions are not going to occur because we're isolating the allocation of this amount of money from next year's revenues already. And so we don't know if this budget, this advance allocation is going to have to come out of addiction program services for Oasis Center or Sanctuary. We don't know where it's going to come from. We don't know what else we're giving up in the priority needs of this government because the the discussion is isolated and not done within the framework of the entire budget and the entire need of this government and the departments and agencies. When I said, well, we'll just reduce the budget of the Department of Education's allocation next year to account for this advanced appropriation, I kind of assumed because I had, I understood that the Department of Education had budgeted or requested in the budget 1.9 million dollars for security programs and systems in the next fiscal year. The problem is that that request is included in not its current operating budget in terms of what it's spending today, but that 1.9 is part of a $283 million request that the Department of Education is, is requesting, which means that that money, that amount is going to have to be reduced by the tens of millions of dollars. Because given the revenue that the governor submitted and what he has submitted, it's not even enough to give DOE what they're spending today to operate the department and agencies. I mean, it's department, it's different divisions. So the governor's allocation of the total revenues collected next year reduces what is available for the Department of Education from its current operating expenses. And so we're going to have to then cut the current operating expenses, which they say they're short, by 800,000 in order to allocate that. And we don't know what, where we're going to cut that because we haven't looked at what the, that, those operating expenses are going to cover and entail. So again, I, I think we support it. I think that, you know, certainly, but that's the concern I have, is that, again, we're taking money next year in isolation, allocating it without knowing what, what are we going to give up next year? Where are we going to reduce the cost by this 800,000? We, we may think it's, it's miniscule and we'll cover it somewhere, but that's, that is the, the big question. Somewhere where? And what? And is it at mental health? Is it at subsidy to GMH? Is it at GPD cars? Is it at the courts? We don't know because the discussion is isolated and not part of the entire budget process. And so that's the concern I have. I would, I would hope that, you know, again, I go back to, why did we do advanced appropriations for textbooks? It's because DOE can then put out the RFP, issue the, the order, but when it comes time to pay, it's paid within that fiscal year. So, you know, even thought of the idea of authorizing them to spend 800,000 so that they can issue the RFP and then we debate the, the matter of appropriating the money. But it's almost, you know, one hand versus the other hand, or six versus, you know, half a dozen. It becomes the same thing. It becomes isolated and we really don't approach the budget from that perspective. And, but that's okay, I guess, because, you know, I'm not going to lose any hair over it because I got no more to lose. So I just wanted to express that concern, Mr. Speaker, and, and I really think that, you know, we need to be aware of that and what choice we're going to make because it's going to have to be a, a choice that we, we deny somebody else something. And if we have in our mind what that is, then maybe that's good, but I certainly don't know what that is in this isolated discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Speaker Pangolin. Senator Tom Ada?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I certainly support the idea of providing security systems in our schools. I would just like to ask some questions on several parts of the, of the bill itself. First of all, I presume that this is going to be actually a, a, the procurement of the equipment is actually going to be a bid as opposed to a request for, well, I guess it won't be a request for proposal because we're actually just getting bid. I mean, it's just equipment. But I do have a question on page one, two, page three, and on, on paragraph B, there it talks about the responsibility or it defines who the contractor is. And, and it says here that the contractor shall be the winning bidder for the contract and shall be fully responsible for the purchase of equipment, the installation, permits of the installation of the equipment, and the first year of monitoring and maintenance of electronic security systems. And so I, I guess then in the second year, DOE is going to go out there and, and I guess put out another bid for monitoring services. But then in the next sentence on line eight, there it says that the contractor shall provide a warranty of at least five years, which will include then biannual testing and all that. So, so it's kind of confusing here because we require the contractor, the, the winning bidder, to be responsible for the first year of monitoring and maintenance. But then the contractor shall also provide a warranty for at least five years, which includes all these maintenance aspects and whatnot. So it, it's not clear who's going to do what, you know? So in the second year then, that this equipment is in place where DOE is going to go out there, ma- maybe it might simplify things that basically the contract, that the bid would basically be, Mr. Contractor, you go out there and purchase the equipment based on the specifications that were outlined in the study, and for the next five years, you're responsible for maintaining or, and, and monitoring the system. So it's, it's, I don't have an amendment right now, but I'm just pointing out that this, this, I think, will be a cause of confusion. In the, well, if, and if the author wants to respond, certainly.
Madam Speaker, you recognize?
Yes, thank you very much. And that's a, a very good question, and it's a question that I had asked GSA when I spoke with them. And their, their suggestion was that because, for at least the first year when they install the cameras, that we want them to maintain it and monitor that because it could occur. Basically, we don't know when exactly it's going to, to occur. Surely it's not going to be from school year to school year or fiscal year to fiscal year, so we want them to do just that. Secondly, he's also asked that we do put that down because, you see, when they put out the RFP, it'll be very specific to this, that they want the contractor then is to provide that five-year warranty for the, the cameras. And he said that when you're very specific about it at the beginning, then what, what it does is that then you would be able, I mean, those companies, those contractors will respond accordingly to the specifications. What the concern was is that when you separate the two, with, if a company's going to, a contractor's going to come in, put in the equipment, they want to give a five-year warranty, you get somebody else to come in and then touch the equipment, then in essence they would want to wash their hands off by not saying, we would not provide that, you know, warranty, you know, anymore. So this was, of course, recommended, like I said earlier, by GSA, and as you had mentioned, it would be based on the specifications from the study in which it would be done prior to putting out the bid.
Okay. Thank you. I, well, if we go to the next page, it talks about monitoring, the definition of monitoring, and that basically the monitoring that's going to be required by the bid is, it's a service provided by a third party to monitor the electronic security systems for up to 24 hours a day, seven days a week, or as needed. Okay, well, I, I don't know, maybe, my, my concern is, is if that invitation for bid package is, is it going to require 24 hours a day, seven days a week monitoring? Why would we want to basically pay for monitoring services during school hours when everybody is there on campus? Now, I, I know that it was mentioned earlier that we may want to be basically monitoring the hallways, so I guess that kind of implies that there's going to be a monitoring system on each school campus. So all these cameras are going to be tied into a monitoring station on the, on each specific campus, and somebody's going to be monitoring it there. And if that's the case, then after school hours, then there's got to be a body that's there to, to, to be doing the monitoring. So I, again, it's, it seems a little loose here and, and, and it's something that we may want to take a look at closer. On, on the same page, on line four, paragraph F, it defines maintenance and it means the, the annual, biannual testing of the electronic security systems, including but not limited to, and it lists down all the things to be done. And I, I would suggest that maybe we take a look at, at changing the language to say that it, maintenance means the periodic but no less than biannual testing. So what that means then is, according to this definition here, he comes in and, and he does the testing on, you know, March, and then he comes in in June, and, and that's it. And any other testing that needs to be done or maintenance, that's going to be an extra fee, I would imagine. But if we say just periodic, you know, you just, you come in and you do it as necessary. On line five there, it talks about that the maintenance will include but not limited to the visual inspection where accessible of all the major electronic security system components. Well, then, if I don't have, if that's the case, where accessible, I just put everything inside some conduits where I won't be able to see it, it's not accessible, so I won't have to then inspect or maintain. So I would suggest that on line five, we should consider really just deleting the words where accessible and simply you go in there and you do the necessary testing, do the visual inspections, but, you know, and if you have to get into the nooks and crannies, so I, again, it's just something that we may want to consider, you know, for this. Well, I can't because I don't have it in my mind right now. I'm just, oh, okay, well, that's an easy one. Actually, on line five then, to just delete the words where access, where accessible.
Anybody wish to speak on the amendment? Anybody, if there's no objection?
What version am I looking at? I'm looking at a version that says, as amended by the committee and further substituted on the floor. And then it's got a initials of the author. And then on line four, I would like to make the amendment then to read, maintenance shall mean the periodic, comma, but no less than biannual, comma, testing of the electronic security system, and so on.
Did the clerks get that? One more time, please, the clerks need to catch that.
It will read, maintenance shall mean the periodic, comma, but no less than biannual, comma, testing of the electronic security system.
We have it, thank you. On that amendment, any objection?
On that same page, down on line 21, it reads that the contractor shall further be responsible for the connection and payment of all utilities, including but not limited to power, telephone, and cable. And that might, that might cause the price of this bid to, you know, inflate because it's hard for the contractor to kind of, well, it's, it's just not clear. I, I guess, is he going to be responsible for the payment? When we say for the payment of all utilities, for how long? For that one period that he's responsible for the monitoring? Well, it's, it's not clear. You know, so is he going to pay for the utility bills for all the power, the, it's just not clear, unless we're talking about the cost of installation of utilities?
Madam Speaker, you recognize?
Thank you very much. No, what this will mean is just during the time of the installation, where they're going to need to pull in additional, they need to install additional phones, they need to pull in additional cables, you know, to be able then to set this up, to test it, to make sure it's running, and that's, that's all that is needed for that one-time installation. The, the regular utilities is still the responsibility of the department.
Okay, fine. We go down to line, on section 58C102, it talks about the requirement for the security system study. And this is basically the analysis that's going to precede everything. I guess we're going to, either DOE is going to do it themselves, or they're going to go out there and hire a consultant to go out and, and, and do the, and, and do the study, come up with the specs, that they're going to need a camera with, you know, a certain aperture, they're going to need, basically, computers with hard drives that have certain capacities, and they're going to, I guess, specify, make all these specifications. But if it's the latter, then that DOE is, if they're going to go out and hire a consultant to make this study and come up with the specifications, it would seem that it would only be fair that then whoever that company is should be prohibited from being able to be a bidder. Otherwise, he really gets an advantage over the other bidders because he would have already, you know, listed, he would have already done all the necessary research, whereas everybody else is just kind of flying in the blind. So that is something, I think, that needs to be considered as to whether, if, if in fact, a consultant's going to be hired, is he going to be prohibited? And that's normally the case. I, I guess if a company is in, in construction, if a company is hired to, you know, normally he doesn't bid, he kind of conflicts himself out. So I just bring up those, those points. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say they're deal breakers, but at least for my support of the bill, but it is certainly something that I think may come, come back to haunt us if we don't take the time to, to tighten some of these things, to tighten them up. So that's, I just, I just make that suggestion, and, and otherwise, I, you know, I would support the bill. Thank you.
Senator Ada, you've addressed two of the, your concerns. Do you want to make an amendment on the third concern?
Well, it's, on the issue about the, the monitoring-
The conflict, possible conflict on section five, I mean, the top of page.
Yeah, I, I mean, on that one, I guess I, I don't have the, the final English right now that, you know, can concisely articulate what it is, that maybe legal counsel can.
Okay.
But basically, the idea is that-
We can come back to you.
I'm sorry?
We, we'll come back to you if you want.
Okay.
I'll, I'll hear Senator Rodriguez, and then if you have the language, we'll address yours.
Okay.
Any other senator wish to be heard after Senator Rodriguez? Senator Limtiaco? Senator Rodriguez, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I want to share some of the concerns that I have about the bill, but first of all, I want to acknowledge that this bill tries to accomplish something that we need to address, and which is to protect our schools, our school facilities. I don't need to mention again how, what my other colleagues have discussed here and how our facilities have been broken into, vandalized, and we need to address it and put a stop to it. However, I, I'm not too sure, Mr. Speaker, whether the, the route that this bill is taking is the right approach. And if I'm, if I'm going to repeat some of the things that may have been said because I stepped out earlier, and I apologize for that. I, I remember in the last session when we were dealing with this bill, there was some talk about perhaps looking at, looking at other alternatives. One of our good colleagues here had talked about a concept or an idea that came about from one of my mentors in life, the late Governor Bernalio, about perhaps working with families, working with individuals around the, the neighborhood where schools are located, and, and using them as the security for the schools. where schools are located, and, um, and using them as the, um, security for the schools. Um, I was hoping that we can, um, expand on those discussions and perhaps have something that was related to that. But if you look at the, um, the definitions of what electronic security system is and what this bill is, is calling for, if, and I'll read it here, page, um, I believe it's page three, line 19, "Electronic security system refers to security cameras and intrusion detection or alarm systems that shall be installed." And so we know it's not just cameras, because if we, if we just listen back to some of the discussions we've been having, referring a lot to it as cameras, as security cameras being installed. And if it's just security cameras, I'm even more concerned, because I don't think that would do the job. So that's, um, that's, that's, that's one of my concerns. I, I think, you know, we need to look at, uh, I know that JFK is doing, uh, a security system there, but it's, it's foot patrol. You have actual security guards that may be, um, roaming, uh, the facility, and sometimes that alternative i- is something more practical. If you look at also, um, a discussion that was had by the retiring speaker, Senator Ada, about monitoring, if you look at what it, what the definition here of monitoring is, is that monitoring refers to service provided by a third party to monitor the electronic security systems for up to 24 hours a day. And if someone can answer me, if, if that, if that means that if the school opts to get a, an alarm system, that, that is being monitored in terms of if there is a, um, if, if the alarm is tripped, or if the alarm is, is set off? I don't know how it can set off in the middle of, of the day when school's in session, but I'm sure there's some features there that would require monitoring. So I don't know if that's what this means. So that's, that's one question I have.
We'll allow the speaker to, the author to, um, respond. Do you yield, Madam Speaker, to that question?
Yes, uh, on, I'm sorry, I should have put page number, so, one, two, three, on page three.
Page four.
Uh, when it talks about the equipment, that the alarm systems, uh, on line 23, is part of this whole system, so it's not, we're not just talking, yes, about, uh, cameras, because there'll be, of course, computer, uh, there's videos, there's the recorder, there's the security cameras, there's the alarm system, uh, and, as you said, also a, an intrusion, uh, system. So, uh, it's, it's a comprehensive, uh, program, and, 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 yes, I get, and, so that's for that question, uh, the other question that he had asked, are other alternatives that were, were considered. And I, I know I'll be dating myself when, when I say this, because you had mentioned, um, what the former governor, you know, had, uh, had done at the time when he was governor, because I just happened to be a teacher of that particular school in my first year, uh, where we did have, uh, one of our temporary buildings actually be, uh, used by, uh, this man, uh, to walk around the campus, live on the campus in the evenings. And of course, as the school population start to, started to increase, and then with liabilities, uh, against the department, it was decided that, um, one is that they couldn't afford to continue to, to house an individual on the campus. Uh, the other discussion, uh, about getting foot patrol is that one of the things we did first was through the CAPE program, is to allow for, or expand the duties and responsibilities of our CAPE, uh, volunteers, is to actually drive around the school campus, uh, to be visible in the school campus, to provide additional presence, uh, in the school campus as a deterrent. Uh, the other is that, yes, at JFK, they have this one individual, but it's not a full system that we're, we're talking about here. And with that, is that that one person cannot be everywhere. Uh, there were cases where, uh, individuals have entered the school campus, so that if it's not during the day, then you don't catch anyone. You won't even be able to catch some of the problems, uh, that we had experienced. Uh, if you recall, um, a couple of years back, when there's this, when this fight started to, um, what was that, A, AMA, or whatever you call that, uh, MAA? And, anyway, a fighting group. And our children wanted to participate in that, and then, uh, when there are no adults, then you'll find them in the corners of the hallways, actually, uh, fighting, demonstrating, and others are, they're encouraging and, and, and rooting, you know, for these individuals, the students fighting. And we couldn't catch the children because we didn't have enough school aides to be around. You would just never. Uh, Southern High School said the same thing, that when they had that one incident, uh, at the school campus, they were even thinking as one of the solutions. And if you're thinking security, one individual, uh, at the campus, Southern High School at all, uh, all, just that school alone, was requesting for an additional 25 school aides to be everywhere, to monitor, because such a large campus that you, you, you won't be able to catch them at the different, uh, corners of the, of the campus. And when you, if you're going to say downstairs, you want to put one person in the corner? Well, there was an upstairs, second floor, then you need another person. So you've got to double the number of individuals, personnel, uh, in your campus. And, and so hence, of course, uh, with all that discussion that the department's been having, and that was the reason why, they put in this request, even, yes, in their budget for this year, uh, at $1.9 million, that they're requesting for exactly what it is that we're trying to do here. So I hope I was able to answer your questions.
Does that satisfy your concern?
Um, no, she, she answered the, the question, yes, and she also expanded on it. But I, I, I think, um, at least from my understanding, Mr. Speaker, is that, um, the security system that, that we're looking for here is, is in response to the, the crimes that have been committed to our facilities when school's not in session. And I know, you know, there's probably vandalism going on and, and, and other, um, activities that shouldn't be going on in, um, in, in schools, when school's in session, but that's my understanding, is that, um, this is something that we're looking at to address the problem of vandalism and, and, um, you know, crimes that are committed to the property of our schools. Um, I want to move on, Mr. Speaker. The other, um, concern, um, or the other issue I want to, to bring up is that this, um, on page four, is the security system study. When I first read it, I said, okay, this is something perhaps that the, um, the school system themselves can, can, you know, will be able to look at the facilities they have and, and determine what type of, um, security system is needed in each school. However, when I, um, was listening to the retiring speaker, um, from Ingelau, I, um, you know, he, he brought up a good point that, you know, um, lit that light bulb in my, my mind, in terms of perhaps the possibility of, of DOE, um, hiring a consultant to put a security system study together. And if, I, I don't know if that's the intention. Uh, it doesn't, it's not clear here whether that is the intention. Um, if it is the intention, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned, because I don't know if the funding of eight hundred, the advance appropriation of 800,000 is the same pot of which this study, uh, will be paid for. Um, if it is, then, um, as I said, I'm, I'm concerned with that. Um, the other, um, concern that I have, uh, Mr. Speaker, is that on page five, um, section three, advance appropriation, um, I'm, I'm still trying to understand what this advance appropriation means, but I'll, I'll just continue to listen. But when we say here on line, um, 14, that, um, "As well as for the first year of monitoring and maintenance are the same as outlined in the report required." So we're saying here is that we're going to use 800,000 to purchase security equipment, and that it's only, we, we know, we're going to buy it from a contractor, and we're only going to pay for one year, and after that, you can bill us. You can start charging us. I don't know if, um, that's a question that could be answered, if that is a standard, you know, because we, we know this industry standard, that it's only one year of maintenance and, and monitoring that we can get, um, or not. I think if we're, if we're dealing with one contractor, one vendor, 800,000, I think we should be able to, um, to have a little bit more leverage and say, you know, if that's your one year, we want to, we want to, um, you know, get a, a bang for our buck and, and try to get as much, um, as, as much more for monitoring and maintenance. Um, so I'll, I'll leave it. I don't have an amendment now. I'll, I'll listen and, um, perhaps, uh, come back later on if we need to make a change.
Thank you very much, Senator Rodriguez. Um, I, the next speaker that's going to be recognized is Senator Luntiaco. Did you wish to respond to before, or do you want to hear Senator Luntiaco, and then respond to all of them?
Yeah, I, I would rather do it individually, so I won't forget. Uh, the, the concern about the security, uh, system study, and originally, uh, when the language that we had was that we were going to have DOE perform this study, because then they would know exactly where it is that they would like to have these security cameras, uh, installed. Uh, what this is, is not, it, it's not any other kind of study, it's a study instead to develop the specifications for the type of security system that they want. Now, if, of course, my colleagues feel a little bit more comfortable by not, by not having the department go out and get, uh, and procure, uh, a separate services to have this done, then it, that's, that's the reason why we have the option here, that the superintendent, uh, you know, shall do this, or, you know, uh, cause it to be performed by somebody else. And those will be just for the specifications, and the reason why I say that's because you want the department to be able to set certain policies as well after they've done this, because you really don't want to have cameras in certain places. You don't want to have cameras, uh, you know, in the, uh, in the shower rooms, for example, the dressing rooms. Uh, so there are just specific places that, you know, you, you would not want to do that, and I think it's important for the department to, to make that decision. In the, the question about, um, the advance appropriations, it's exactly just that. That means, as, as Speaker Ben spoke, uh, on the same issue, and have the same concerns as well as, as you do, uh, the other is that, uh, where it says for the first year, because it, we don't know, uh, and I did discuss this earlier, as to when this would happen, whether it's mid-year, mid-school year, mid, uh, fiscal year, uh, so we, we don't want to just install it and then wait for the following fiscal year, then to be able then to have the maintenance costs addressed. And it was suggested that in the last session, is that, um, we would do this in advance nows to purchase, and then thereafter, make it a part of the department's, uh, submitted office annual budget, uh, for cameras, uh, annually. Um, I think, was that the only question, I think?
I think those were the, the two.
Okay, thank you.
Senator Luntiaco, you're recognized.
Jesus, maasi, Mr. Speaker. Um, I stand in support of the bill. Um, I do have some concerns, though, as, uh, one of my colleagues pointed out, some funding issues, so, uh, but I would like to recognize the author for one, um, from the bill's original, um, draft to now, uh, I, I commend her on listening to her colleagues, Ms. Speaker, and incorporating the amendments into the bill. I think it's a, it's a good show of, uh, cooperation and compromise. However, uh, after one of our colleagues pointed out, um, we spent a lot of time on, uh, section three, and, uh, you know, one, one of the, uh, the changes to the bill that I had proffered was to reduce that amount from, I believe it was, uh, 1.2 million or $800,000 for the first year, and another $800,000 for subsequent years. And although this, um, this, uh, change to the bill, uh, took that into consideration, I am concerned with, uh, one of my colleagues' earlier testimony regarding the budget request for DOE, and where this money is actually going to come from, and whether or not we're going to need to, um, move money around from one agency to the other in order to, to make it happen. So I am concerned about that, and I'm, I'm wondering how we can get more information to make a, a educated vote on the bill. Um, however, I, I do, uh, I do support the bill in its, in its entirety, as long as we can answer that question that, uh, one of our colleagues had brought up earlier in the discussion. Um, lastly, uh, Senator Rodriguez had brought up, uh, a question as to, you know, uh, off-hours monitoring, and I just wanted to advise him of the fact that at the public hearing, I specifically asked the question, because we were, we were on the same page there, "How are you going to monitor the theft of copper wire after hours?" You know, and I, I specifically asked if there was, uh, specific technology, uh, that, you know, new technology that, uh, would aid in the monitoring of it. And, uh, there was, the, the public hearing, um, those that were present at the public hearing did say that there is some new motion detection equipment, basically when, i- if a, a zone, uh, is being monitored, that, uh, it, it would trigger the mon, it, basically, it would, it would find the motion, it would, it'd detect it, turn on a camera, and basically the monitors would, would know that there potentially is, uh, in, uh, someone attempting to steal the copper wire. So I just wanted to clarify that for, uh, the good senator. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Luntiaco. Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? Senator Tony Ada? Any other senator? Okay. Senator Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, Mr. Speaker, um, in looking at the bill, and I was reviewing the committee report, uh, the bill, uh, in the committee report, they had an issue with the infrastructure of security needs. And on there, it said, "Many of our schools lack the basic communication technology to assist during an emergency on campus. While the parent, the primary use of the bell system is to sig, signal the starting and ending times of instructional blocks, they are also valuable tools when it comes to signaling an emergency by the number or type of ringing. Likewise, an intercom system are commonly used for school-wide announcements. They can also serve in providing instructions during an emergency, emergent situation." And on this, on the committee report, it shows that our bell systems and intercom system statuses, that out of 40 schools, 30, 29 do not have working, or none at all, of the bell systems, and 19, 19 of the bell systems and 29 of the intercom systems. And in addition to that, out of 40 of the schools, 18 have a need for repairs to the, to the gates or the perimeter, the perimeter fencing. And I think it's important to know that, or to state that, um, if we're going to put in such an elaborate security system, that I think the basic infrastructure of the security, the, the security fencing and the bell system that hasn't been addressed here, um, i- is of a concern. And I'm not sure whether there is something, a, a separate piece of legislation that's going to address this issue, or if DOE will be addressing that issue on their own.
Madam Speaker, do you wish to address that?
Yes, uh, Mr. Speaker. Uh, okay, I'll take the last one and work my way forward. Um, it is true that what, yeah, uh, Senator, the previous speaker had just addressed in terms of what intercom system do we have in our schools that work, what bell system do we have that are working or not? Uh, for the most part, uh, it's true, that the bell system normally, if it works, is to signal, of course, an emergency, should there be a fire. Uh, as a result of some school closures, uh, it was decided that they, that the department institute some form of a security watch, uh, just because of the fact that our bell systems don't work, or the intercam, intercoms don't work. So you have these individuals now, the school aides actually, maybe some of the administrators will go out and blow the whistle, go down the hallways and, and call out to everyone that, uh, you know, we have this emergency. The other is, of course, you would like to use, yes, the bell system to indicate when the class will begin and when the class will end. But truly, as an educator, it is not the bell that determines when instruction begins and when it ends, and that then it was decided that without that, that it will be the teachers who would then begin the instruction and end the instruction and send the children off- then begin the instruction and end the instruction and send the children off on their way to their next class. The whole issue with gates and the fencing is that they're, naturally, it's going to take money again to go in and repair. I will tell you this, however, that one of the biggest concern about the fence that we have, more importantly, the gates, by locking the gates, and by locking the gates, then it was reported by GPD that it makes it very difficult for them to go in and monitor the campus if they're going to lock their gates. Since then, of course, the decision was to leave the gates open and by doing so, allow Cape volunteers to go in, GPD officers to drive around the campus. And then, and the last thing, of course, is that if it is locked and then normally, from personal experience, is that I would get the phone call from the security system people to go down to my campus, unlock the gates, allow them to come in to go and then check the campus. By that time, of course, the, the individuals would have left already. So it is another issue. This bill does not address that. Be great, of course, yes, if we can have the additional, you know, funds in the future to go in and make more repairs. They, they can and they have, maintenance have in the inspections I know that they've done because I, one recent school that we visited on the backside where the children were escaping, where the gates were there, but the children decided to dig below the gate to be able to escape from the campus and go out to, to the boonies. And yes, there are some that have been cut and then they have been rewired again. So, but that is not being addressed here. So that will have to be a totally different issue. The question about where, of course, the money is coming from and that, and Speaker Ben is, is right when he says that, you know, we like to be able to holistically look at this and see then, when you have the whole picture in front of you in terms of how you're going to reduce the budget, you know, to be able to make that decision. By the same token, when you read page two, where it actually originally, the final payment of this 1.2 million dollars from a short-term financing that is going to expire, and fortunately in this case, it would expire in September, which is just before the new fiscal year. So, and, and he's correct as well by saying then that it has been incorporated into this budget, but we still don't know where. So on both sides, we don't know where. The bottom line is, of course, is the decision to, that we have to make, is that do we want to do this? And I believe every single individual in here want to do this, that we want to be able to secure not just our campus from vandalism, just not just to secure our campuses after school hours, it's also to make sure that our children and the people who are in our campus can also feel safe in the campus. And then lastly, is that because of this new event that's going to, to happen, is the, the computers that are going to be purchased to be able then to provide additional security for those. So it's, it's, it addresses at least those three areas. I won't be able to tell Senator Luntiaco specifically where now this 1.2 million has been then farmed out or attached to any specific program at departments or agencies. But by the same token as well, is that I know we won't be able to, to do this when, until the budget actually is before us, but primarily, yes, at OFB first, is to determine then based on the total dollar amount that we are bringing in, how we're going to divvy up that money. It's not as easy as it would be for specific funds that were created by law to specifically be given to a program or a department for them to use for their operations. And that's totally separate from just the general fund. And this is actually where it's coming from, the general funds.
Is that response sufficient to the two of you?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. I understand, I understand what the Madam Speaker has explained. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Luntiaco. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. Senator Morris, Tommy Morrison, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I appreciate the author's efforts in trying to look at options to secure our campuses for our children and that it, we prevent these, these thieves from entering the campus. However, I'm not sure if the monitoring devices are, have that capability of preventing. I know they're considered a deterrent, deterrents, but in, in previous cases of the thefts or copper wire thefts, of course, through certain processes by law enforcement, GPD, we were able to capture these individuals. So there are processes, of course, if it's the aftermath though, that the theft occurred, that we catch these individuals. So we know that law enforcement do have these processes to handle these types of cases. So I'm not sure there's, if it's clear on how these monitoring devices are going to prevent theft in the future. Many years ago, we're trying, we were trying to also protect restrooms, public restrooms for all kinds of theft. Of course, it's not as, school is not as seems, not as, not as important, but the, the route I took was in some restrooms we had to demolish. I'm not saying we're to demolish schools, but how do you maintain something that's not maintainable? In this case, how do we secure things? How do we secure schools that are not securable? We just talked about a lot of the access of theft, where they're coming through. The speakers mentioned that the campus, the borders are not secure. So we also mentioned that even with the monitoring device, theft is still occurring. So the question I have is what do, is there plans in place simultaneously to secure the campuses, borders in line with these monitoring devices? And I made it very clear, how do you secure something that's not securable? There are monitoring devices out there that are not doing their job, it's not doing its job. But again, with law enforcement in place, we are still able to capture these individuals with the protocols that are placed, the laws that are in place to track license plates, track driver's license, those who are selling these copper wires. So I'm not sure if there are plans in place to first secure the campuses, their borders, prior to putting these devices in. And the other question I have is how much is, what is the reoccurring expenses or costs for these, this monitoring device annually or monthly? What would be the actual cost for all of this? Or is it built into, I know we talked about installation, but I'm not sure that's built into this as well. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Morrison. Madam Speaker, a couple of new questions that have been raised.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. And I appreciate, you know, the question because, you know, the, the previous speaker is right. We want to be able to try to start from our borders, try, you know, the, the entire area of the, of the school campus. But there really isn't any 100% foolproof way to ensure, to guarantee that these cameras and intrusion systems and videos and computer servers, recorder servers, alarm systems and all that would really be a 100% deterrent. It's a combination of things. One, like I mentioned earlier, with the Cape volunteers who would go out to the campus. There's the police enforcement, law enforcement as well. I know that some schools have developed some neighborhood watch with their communities to, to go out also and, you know, check on the campus. But there's no clear-cut way to prevent this. It's a combination of things. Senator, I don't mean, I'll mention a name, but Senator Eli Yamaschita, and I know as well as educators, that a lot of these things, a community that we would want, where we would not go and vandalize, you know, our, our facilities, we would not go and disrespect somebody's private property. And so a lot of this really is what is it that we're teaching our children? How are we teaching them? It's their attitudes about some things. Unfortunately, with the economy as it is, people now are wanting to find ways to go and get money. So those are some of the things that really will not cost money at all. It's going to take a little time, a little caring, to be able to talk to, you know, to everyone, to say, teach them some of these, and I'm going to say virtues, not necessarily personal values, but virtues, virtues that are widely accepted by every community throughout the world. It's respect for property, respect for oneself. That's accepted by every community and every religious group, so, and every ethnic group. And when you teach this, then children will start to respect their facility that they have and not go and destroy it and then deprive other children from not having, you know, the supplies and materials that they need. The one question, of course, I can't answer, is the reoccurring cost. I don't know what that is and that's the only reason why the language that we put on the bill on page five is that DOE will submit because once they know, then they would submit it in their budget exactly what that cost will be. So we don't know. I won't be able to, to even guess what that amount could be. So I hope Senator was able to, to answer your questions.
Senator Morrison, was that satisfactory? Thank you very much, Senator Morrison. Senator Yamaschita, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, you know, I, when you listen to the author of this legislation speak one more time, it is appreciated, the institutional knowledge that comes with experience from actually working in the school system, but then actually working at the legislature. To be able to answer all of those questions with confidence and, and truthfully, and to say that we don't always know the answers is most greatly appreciated. Mr. Speaker, it also has to be applauded, the notion of collaborative leadership. This measure is being pushed in one, one reason is because the GDOE board said that before hardware and technology and software and all of the tools that are a part of the 21st century, before those are to be invested upon, they needed a security system in place. So the author of this legislation continued to try to find that. And yes, the money, you know, where are we getting it? How are we going to ensure that it's there? I appreciated the notion of talking about it being an isolated conversation piece. But I would hope that we also look at the reason why we are attempting to do this. It's about protecting, it's about allowing our GDOE board to invest in equipment that they say this kind of system, security systems will help. But it's also about the crime that happens 24 hours a day when there are no kids there. And unfortunately, a lot of these cases are inside cases. I think it was last year, we had a, we had a father and a son at a Jotunia school, you know, and, and we have unfortunately those kind of cases. And hopefully, these electronic systems that are going to be awake throughout all hours are going to catch these people. You know, earlier today, we were talking about measures that would help prevent and say, you're not going to do this anymore. If you do this, you shall be punished. And when I stood to speak about that particular measure and another measure similar to that yesterday, I talked about how those measures were but a tool in a whole toolkit. And I would suggest that this measure is as well a tool in a whole toolkit. And as one of our senators asked or, or proffered that this isn't really going to resolve our issue, and as the speaker addressed it, we agree. We need to ensure that our, our kids are taught civic duty because they're not. We need to make sure that our families know how to teach responsibility because they're not. We need to ensure that Crime Stoppers gets the support they want and that school Crime Stoppers gets the kind of support, that we use the resources that we have. Madam Speaker talked about how she's energized Cape and they're now able to walk across the campuses. And that took a lot of discussion to have those kinds of strangers who didn't know our kids walking campuses, but that's happening. We need to make sure that our teachers teach social studies because that's where it is and health, my goodness, because that's where we start talking about respecting ourselves and respecting property and respecting others. That's really the whole toolkit. And when we finally get all of this in order, and we need to teach teachers how to do this, then we need to teach principals how to make sure that this is all going on. Because no one can tell me it's not about money because, my goodness, the SCOM legislature has always put education at the top of the list. So they keep getting the money, and I will say this again, and I've said this before. When I was at SCOM Department of Education, our local appropriations were always at 140 million and we had 36,000 students at that time. Today, we have almost 31,000 students and the local appropriations are over 200 million. As well, we still get over 50 million in federal monies. It's not about money. It's about how well we use this money. And so I would suggest that the, the way we're using this money is a part of the answer to how to ensure that our, our school campuses throughout the day, throughout the evening, are safe and secure. So I appreciate the discussion because it means people are really paying attention and it does mean that people are caring, even if it is already past five o'clock. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Yamaschita. Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? Any senator wish to be heard on the bill? If not, I will invite the sponsor to close. On the motion to send the bill to the third, to the voting file without any objections ordered, the chair will call a recess until nine AM tomorrow morning.